Well, we're back this week from vacation and an exciting show tonight. First, we'll be talking about how I found out, well, I may be a communist. I'll explain that a little bit. And the county commissioners-elect are coming up tonight on Feedback. All right, we are back. As I said last week, we were on a little bit of sabbatical. We're back here this week on Feedback. A lot to talk about, actually, what I'm going to talk to you about today. I wanted to talk to you about it last week, so I'm excited to get it in tonight. And also, coming up later in the show, we're going to be talking to the Clarion County Commissioners-Elect, all three on one stage. It's a big night. But first, I'm going to... This has really been... I've been really excited to talk to you about this. I was listening to talk radio a few weeks ago, and they were talking about this website where you actually go in and you click on your stances on a lot of issues: foreign policy, gun control, campaign finance reform, everything that you always hear about. And you would just click one button, and it would give you all of the presidential contenders in order that you rank with them. It's kind of a silly idea, you know, actually picking your candidate on issues, but I thought I'd give it a try. So I went to the website. It is selectsmart.com if you want to play along at home. Selectsmart.com, and you just click on Presidential Candidates. So I went through, I went down, gun control, everything, the whole gamut. And I clicked on the Submit My Vote. Well, it's sort of as I expected. You know, at the bottom, I have Orrin Hatch, George W. Bush, Gary Bauer, Lyddie Dole, Patty Cannon, Donald Trump, Steve Forbes, John McCain, and all of those people scored under 40 on my list. They give it as a percentile, under 40. Forty and above, I got Warren Beatty, Ralph Nader. I got a 41. Harry Brown, I'm not even sure who that is, I got a 45, so I don't know what that means. Al Gore, who you've heard me talk about a few times on here, got a 64, so now we're sort of getting into the range. Bill Bradley, I got a 70. You've heard me talk about him a lot on here, being that I think he's sort of going to squeak through anyway, so it's kind of neat that I'm sort of on the same path as him, even though I only got a 70. So that doesn't mean we're in total agreement. I'm not in total agreement with anyone. Well, my number one was a 74 percent. I got David McReynolds. You're probably shaking your head like I was, sitting at the computer. I didn't know who this was. Well, you're able to click on their name, and they give you a little bit of information. You can go to their website. So I click on his name. I go to his website. Guess what party he's affiliated with? I mean, this is just, it's too fitting, I think. He is a socialist. So, you know, as you can see that I am a communist. I've been accused of that on a few occasions, actually, based on my views on the program and in life in general. So I thought that was rather fitting. I've actually never heard of the guy. I really don't think he's going to go too far unless a lot of other communists like me get out there and vote on this. And go to selectsmart.com, www-selectsmart.com. Click on Presidential Candidates. You can go through and find out if you're a communist or not, or if you're a libertarian, or whatever you think you are. You may be proven wrong, because I actually had my roommate take the test. He thought, oh, I knew who... He says, "Al Gore, that's my guy." Well, it turns out, he got Gary Bauer. It's his number one. So maybe issue-wise, you know, you need to reexamine things. You need to vote on issues. So it looks like I'm voting communist next year. That I wanted to tell you about. And what we're going to do now is take a break. We're going to come back. The county commissioner candidate for Clarion County-elect will be up after this.
In the early years, young children cannot stand on their own. Uniting parents and children is an important part of the life of a community. Stand for Children encourages people to make a personal commitment to stand for the health of children. Three hundred thousand Americans marched in Washington, DC last June to support Stand for Children Day. Stand for Children seeks to lift the belief that children need our help to stand.
Yeah! Woo! Yeah! Who's the mayor?
It's a birthday. I'm the mayor.
It's a birthday.
Exercised lately.
Go for the mouthful, go for the fun.
Come on, go for cake!
Gopher cakes for everyone. Just one stack is what it takes. And it's gopher, gopher, gopher cakes. Open wide, stuck your face. There's always room for more gopher cakes. Empty the box every load. Eat those gopher cakes till you explode.
Exercised lately.
Till you explode.
Sad, looking back now, the things you go through in life. Scary. The worst thing about being on welfare was didn't get my kids what they really wanted. I had to get a better life for my girls and myself. I got off welfare. I got a good job. Makes me the happiest mother in the world. I live for my girls.
We're not asking you to hire everyone on welfare. Just one.
And welcome back to Feedback. You know, we're sitting here, we're cracking up during the commercials here with three very fun people. This should be a fun time when you guys take office, I think. But let me introduce you. We have the Clarion County Commissioners-Elect. To my left, David Seifert. To his left, Donna Hurdle. And to his left, John Shropshire. Thank you all for joining us, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Let's start out with, how did you even come into the whole idea of running for the crazy idea of a county commissioner? Everyone's a start. We'll sort of...
Well, I'll start it. The large part of this, because I have 39 years in education, and so I have had a career here at the university as Dean of Enrollment Management since 1972. But what really got me interested in this part was being in Harrisburg and hearing all the jokes about Clarion County. And people have been using us as a laughing stock. That did bother me quite a bit. And that did help submit my concern about running.
Okay. Moving on.
I've been involved in county government for 26 years, primarily in the Commissioner's Office. And I left county employment in January of '97. And I decided at that point, I'm not going to get back into government. I've had quite a bit of years of experience in government. And it didn't faze me until I had all these people ask me constantly, daily, "Please consider running." And the more I thought about it, I thought, well, maybe with my expertise, maybe I should do this. The support was out there, and I thought, well, we'll give it a shot and see what happens. And here I am.
Well, I have over 37 years of work experience, a lot of it in business. I've been a small business owner of my own, worked for quite a few in management firms. And I was considering this about eight years ago, and didn't go for it. I've been watching county government slide downhill, so to speak. In the last four years, it's been pretty brutal. And being on the Clarion Area School Board as a director for a four-year period, I thought, I'm giving a lot of my time to the school district. Maybe we ought to look at getting into county government. And a few of the people that I was talking to suggested, you know, I'd want to give that a try and go with county government, at least get paid for the work you're doing. And I do have an interest in it, and I feel that I can be an asset for work to get the job done.
Okay. You sort of hit on it in some of your responses, but my second question was going to be, what do you think the biggest issues facing Clarion County today are? I mean, I'm sure there's a lot out there, but, I mean, you sort of hit on the reputation. But what else besides that?
Oh, I think budget concerns are a big issue. We don't go anywhere unless we have some type of funds sitting there. And the contingency fund's definitely an issue. Of course, the jailhouse comes to mind right away, as well as the building of the courthouse and taxes. Everybody's worried about that. We've got to keep on promoting business and industry to keep coming into our area.
Okay.
I feel the lack of good leadership has been lacking the last four years. And I think the general public needed to see the light at the end of the tunnel, to see, we've got to get the county back on track. The county has a lot to offer. This county has never been in the position that it is right now with knowing leadership in state as well as federal government levels. And like John alluded to, the laughing stock of Clarion County. We've got to get the county back on track, get it on a professional basis, and roll ahead. Like I said, the county has so much to offer, and we just need to pursue that.
In addition, this will just piggyback on what Dave and Donna have said. Part of the problem, I think, is it's tied to budget and leadership. But there is no direction. And it's pretty hard to go somewhere if you don't really know where you want to go. And I think that that has been lacking. We're not probably progressing in a uniform pattern because of the dearth of leadership that has been out there. I think that the opportunities are great for Clarion County. The potential is great, but it does need some direction. And I think the three of us have an opportunity, really, to... Out of all of the things, you talk about all the problems that exist and so forth, but out of the problems comes opportunities to do good things. So this is one of those things that I think, that's the good side of it. It does present some opportunities to do something, I think, worthwhile.
One of the things that I heard you hit upon in your answers was economic growth, economic development. Seems to be a buzzword. We hear it for everything. How are you going to promote that in Clarion County?
Won't be easy, because there are different groups in Clarion County. There are people in Clarion County who are forward-looking, who see what Clarion can be in, say, 50 years, and how it's going to change. And they're trying to prepare us for the circumstances of that time period. But there are also people who, in my view, are backward-looking. They think that we can go back to 1899 rather than 2001. And it's not going to happen that way. We're going to move ahead whether people want to or not. And we seem to just need some direction to help us get in that area. Economic growth, I'll hear certain people on my township who moved out there because they didn't want... They thought Clarion was too big. And so they moved out to a paint township, thinking that, boy, nobody, I don't have to run into people here. And now people are moving out there. And so now they're looking for somewhere else to go. It's a retreat mode. But the growth that's going to take place is going to be county-wide. It's going to certainly be around the hub of the borough, but the borough's landlocked. So growth that's going to take place is going to be outside the borough.
Okay. Teamwork is something that was stressed on. How are you guys going to work as a team? It was just to tell a little story here. I called you all to come and be on the show, and I got a call only back from one of you saying, "Oh, yeah, we'll all three be there. We discussed it." Because you're obviously working together already. Is teamwork, I guess, right now going to be a factor? How's teamwork going to play in this?
Teamwork will be a big factor in county government. And yes, you're right. We had phone conversations with each other, and we're agreed we'll come here tonight. And I think you'll find that we're not always going to agree on some check. But if there was no disagreement, there wouldn't be any leadership. Where the leadership is going to come, when you find a team that has a disagreement, can put that aside and go on with business. Tomorrow's another day. And I think I'm with two good colleagues here, and I really feel that you've got the team in place to do it. We're going to strive to do it.
From even the primary election on, everyone that was running for the office, their main goal was for teamwork. We definitely see right now where the Board of Commissioners does not play by team rules and are not team players and are definitely not team leaders. And we all decided that this is what we have to do. We're going to put politics aside, and we're all going to get down to what is actually doing the best for the county. And being all three from the Clarion Rotary Club, we have worked together on different projects before, so we have that teamwork basis. Teamwork is our foundation. And we said, if one of us couldn't make it tonight, then all three of us were not going to participate. So we already are on the teamwork play, so to speak.
I would only add that the... Because I think that's an advantage, the fact that all three of us are in Rotary. But we were all friends before this campaign started. We were friends during the campaign, and we'll be friends after the campaign. The fact that we're doing the same job, I think, adds to the pluses on that, because we already have a established friendship. I think part of the problem, and Dave was talking about this on how the past group... Because individually, those are three pretty good people. But if you can't mesh together and get things together on a common page, then eventually you're going to run into some problems. And I think that that's one of the things they personalize. And it's all right to differ with something, as long as you can do it in a civil manner that people can relate to. People aren't offended if you have a view. They recognize that. But I think that the problem came with the last group was that those differences became personalized. And that does make it very difficult to work in a team function when it's done like that.
Okay. We're going to take a break, and when we come back, we're going to be talking more with the team, the Clarion County team, after this. We'll call you guys.
Introducing new frequent phone hours.
Use the phone just eight hours a week and get this free phone cradle. Use the 12 hours and get a speaker phone.
Use the 15 hours and get this cool headset.
Or stay on the phone 20 hours a week.
And get a pasty complexion.
Labby body.
And a great new nickname at school.
Exercised lately.
I want all my sons to be there. I want my mother to be there. My hair's going to be done so beautiful. A lot of music, a nice blue dress. I want to be beautiful for every single person that goes there. If I got something, I want to have a nice funeral.
Every day, 10 children are killed by gunfire. Help stop the violence. Call 1-800-WE-PREVENT for free information. Not one more lost life. Not one more grieving family. Not one more.
It's not just about making plans. It's about making a difference and taking an interest, not just earning it. It's more than investing. It's about knowing you. Edward Jones, investing in you and your dreams.
In Clarion, see Gary Martin located on Main Street. Phone 226-7896.
And we are back here with what I've dubbed the Clarion County team, since they're talking about teamwork. Who is the chair, the leader of the team? Who gets that job?
Well, traditionally in Clarion County, what happens is the highest vote getter is generally elected to be the chairperson. Now, the past group went away from the traditional item, but we have all... The three of us have already agreed that we will go back to the traditional way of doing that. And Donna Hurdle was the top vote getter, and we will nominate her to be chairperson.
Is that way in the middle?
No.
No? Even these guys in line?
Far between two roads.
Gee, I was thinking of the comment in my head, and I thought, someone's going to say it. There it was. In the campaign, I remember reading that you had said about talking about local governments getting involved and not overlapping services. What... Could you stand on that a little bit?
Well, one of the... This is one of my pet peeves. I'm also an outgoing township supervisor. I've been for 17 years. A lot of people are not aware of all the various layers of government that exist. And one of the things that used to be a pet peeve as a township supervisor, you'd read something that the county commissioners were planning on doing in your township, and they've never said word one to you about it. And it's not possible for them to do it in their township without your permission. And in the past, that's happened and created some problems. And some of these are good ideas. If they had been done in the right way, probably would have worked. But what happens when they finally get something, and then finally they have to get the townships or supervisors to sign off, they aren't interested in doing it. Well, the townships are going to be there. The boroughs are going to be there. The counties are going to be there. So what we have to do is find ways to get all three of us to meet together from time to time to make sure some of these regional projects can work.
Okay. The county jail, that was brought up a little bit earlier. I mean, it seems that's always the headline in the paper. Plans for that? Have you guys been talking about that at all?
Do you want me to go? On this is what everybody's been reading in the paper. The current board has hired an architect, and they have began demolition within the walls of the interior of the jail. Right after the primary election, the four, the two Democrats and the two Republicans who had made it in the primary, wrote a letter to the present Board of Commissioners asking that they refrain from doing anything that would tie the county into anything financially on a long-term basis. And unfortunately, they didn't go by our request. And they're looking at getting $100,000 grant from the Pennsylvania Historical and Museum Commission with a local match. Being interviewed last week by one of the local newspapers, this same question was asked. And I said, "Well, who's going into the new prison once it's renovated?" Well, the answer was, they didn't know. The present boards stated that this would be up to the incoming board. And I stated at that time, and I'll state again, that I felt that this was putting the cart before the horse. You don't go into all of this extensive renovations at a very costly price ticket and not know who's going to go in there. And it's something that this board is going to be saddled with, what our roles are right now as Commissioners-Elect going in. I really don't know if we're bound by any of those contracts, if we can stop anything or not. That, we don't know. And it's kind of a touchy situation with me, because I just feel that, you know, this board has done it just so they have something on record that they actually did. And what they're sticking the taxpayers with, as well as this incoming board, I'm not comfortable with at all.
I think the general consensus, by reading the newspaper, is that if, in fact, this thing goes all the way, that we probably will be committed for, what, 15 years on that historical grant to maintain the jail, and that means upkeep. So it's definitely a long-term commitment, not only for the four... Or not for the... Only for us, but for time to come. So they made a long-term commitment, it looks like.
Okay. We, in the prime... Actually, in the general election, I believe there was only a 50% turnout. So it's... I mean, that's not unusual, unfortunately, in this day and age, but that isn't extremely high. Any thoughts on maybe bringing back the people into government, into voting? Any plans, any ideas?
Well, you know, unfortunately, in a democracy where people have a choice to do that, 50% in some areas is awfully high. It depends on where you're talking about. In the township where I live, we will normally get 85% of the people in that township who are eligible to vote. But there are other townships in the county where 20... 25% is the norm. And a lot of that depends on the economic level, the educational level of the county. But the United States, in spite of all of the campaign rhetoric that goes on even in a presidential election, if you can get 55% out, that's considered to be a high voter turnout, even in a national election when the president's running. So it's not something that we have normally been doing. 50% is probably a comparable. It would be one of the higher numbers. It's unfortunate in some sense, but it's realistic, though, to, if you can get between 50 and 60%, you've had a pretty good turnout.
I know. I preached on this show before the election. "Go vote." It takes 10 minutes. It's such a simple procedure.
You've got to remember, on this last election we just had here, we had monsoons hit between 5 o'clock and 6 o'clock. And a lot of people were coming home from work, and probably, hey, I'm not going to get out of this. So I think weather may have been a factor for some of the votes. Certain of that.
Sure.
I think there's one other thing that's always... I've always found to be interesting with voting. And it can be humbling. After all this campaigning with the primary and the general election, Monday before the election, I had my badge on. And some well-intentioned lady asked me, "What's that for?" And I said, "Well, we have an election coming up, and I'm running for commissioner." She said, "Oh, commissioners? Well, who's running?" And after all of this, you know, you would like to think, well, now I know they know who's running, but unfortunately, that is the way it is. We haven't gotten ourselves to the point where voting is going to be in the 90% and people are actually going to pay attention to what the issues were.
Yeah, brings it back to the point I was talking about in the beginning of the show, where people are not... If they are voting, sometimes they're not even voting on issues. And I was telling you during a break, my roommate, he's going to kill me because I said this, but, I mean, he doesn't, you know, he's not even... Presidential campaign, I keep saying, Elon's away. But still, I mean, it's in the news. People are just so apathetic to it. It's kind of scary. It scares me.
Well, I think, too, the general public has a distrust for government, all the way from national level down to some local levels. And I think we might have had a higher return, like Dave said, if we wouldn't have had really bad weather around the dinner hour. I think we would have saw more voters out if it was a decent day. But for 50%, I think Clarion County... I think we did quite well.
Excuse me. I think nationally, there's so many millions of dollars dumped into campaigns that people, after a while, start to think, well, you know, it's already determined. The vote's there. Why should I bother? And that's not right. Get out there and vote. Because one vote can do it. You can make that difference. And there's just millions and millions of dollars that go into the national campaigns. Mind-blowing.
Well, I hear people say, you know, "I'll vote in the presidential, but I won't vote in local." Well, local's the most important.
That's grassroots. That's where you all start.
Unfortunately, we're out of time, but this was fun. We hope to have you back sometime. We appreciate you all coming. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
And we'll be back right after this.
Standing out from the crowd is easy when you stop in at Fashion Bug located in the Clarion Mall. Whether you're looking for junior trendy, girls, or fashion for women, they have it all with many different styles. With our newly expanded shoe and accessory department, you're surely to find that special touch to enhance that new outfit. And if you have a fashion question, our experts are here to help. That's Fashion Bug located in the Clarion Mall, just off Exit 9 of Interstate 80. Open Monday through Saturday, 10 a.m. to 9 p.m., Sunday from noon to 5.
Every day, 10 children are killed by gunfire. You can help stop the violence. Call 1-800-WE-PREVENT. Not one more lost life. Not one more grieving family. Not one more.
News travels fast. That's why you need the speed and accuracy of a news team that brings coverage closer to home. Every Tuesday and Wednesday night, join TV 5 News for Clarion's only live local newscast on television at 8. Tune in for the latest in regional, state, and national news. Plus, with our newspaper exchange partner, the Clarion News, teaming up to bring coverage closer to home every Tuesday and Wednesday at 8 p.m. Clarion's only live local newscast on television at 8 is here on TV 5. Clarion's only live local newscast on television at eight is here on TV Five.
Introducing the Italian Misa Trio from Domino's Pizza located in the eight-hundred center in Clarion. Domino's Pizza offers a wide variety of pizza, wings, breadsticks, and hoagies. And for just nine ninety-nine, get a large unlimited topping pizza. Stop in or have Domino's deliver, that's Domino's Pizza located in the eight-hundred center. Phone 226-4060. That's Domino's Pizza. 226-4060.
And we are back. It was a great show. We want to thank the county commissioners alike all for joining us. These are the names and faces you'll be seeing coming up next year, so keep an eye out for them. We will see you next week here on Feedback.